Good morning. It's February 27th, 9:00 AM. I will call the order, call the order, the meeting of the Slayne County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please read the roll, please?
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here. If you're able to please stand, would you please join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into our citizens' input portion of the meeting where the citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public I'd like to talk? If you please state your name and...
I'm Eric Blenquist. I am here representing the Slayne County Fair Association. I come here today not only as the current president, but a longtime board member, former exhibitor, 4-H parent and member. I'm here to inform you of the situation the fair finds itself in due to the loss of the Tri Rivers Arena. We have a long history, and while much was lost with the arena, we were hopeful as a fair board we could continue strong. While all were aware of the challenges, we did not know the true impact until we had some time to adjust. The budget to conduct the fair has been tight. We received money from Uthe County, which we use exclusively to fund exhibitors in the form of premiums. We rely heavily on the sales of tickets to events that we held at the former arena to help pay for the fair. This includes paying for our expenses such as rentals and judges. I have provided you with a spreadsheet now that we know the impact, from 2017 to last year, so that you can see the numbers I'm talking about. The one event that has been consistent in the ticket sales is the demolition derby. Unfortunately, we have had to move it out of Salina and into the county. While doing so has not impacted ticket sales, it has had a drastic impact on all other aspects of the fair. As you can see, concession sales, carnival income, overall income have been impacted to the loss of over $30,000 a year in revenue. Beyond that, just the numbers, it has a larger impact on our fair's atmosphere as a whole. The demolition derby pulled many people to the fairgrounds, and without it, we do not have the numbers of visitors to our carnival, vendors, or any exhibitors or activities. While we continue to innovate and find new ways to attract those people, we're often told that we should utilize Tony's Pizza Event Center. We'd be happy to use that space, however, when holding events that we currently have have not been able to negotiate terms that make it feasible. For example, prior to 2016, we paid approximately $6,000 a year for the use of T-PAC over a one-week period, which included the use of the parking lot for the carnival. Many of those years, we were renting both the arena side and the other side, now known as the Great Plains Event Center. In 2022, our cost went to $13,680.92. In 2023, the cost was $14,889 for the simple use of one side for four days. In 2019, we held a concert. Due to weather, we forced to move it into T-PAC. We appreciate them working with us. We made $11,000 in ticket sales. We were presented a settlement sheet that showed $7,658 in alcohol sales, $3,000 in concessions. After all expenses, the fair board ended up with $405 of that amount of money. As you can see, working with T-PAC makes it very hard to put on a profitable event. I come here today to ask the commission's help. I understand current fiscal year budgets are set. I ask when working on next year's budget, consider supporting the fair with funds. As you can see, just the loss of revenue, tax dollars from sales have been lost, can help offset other costs. Secondly, I ask the county staff, the city staff, and the management of T-PAC to work with us to negotiate favorable terms with the T-PAC to benefit all of us, from the commission, the fair board, and most importantly, the people of Salina. The fair is a place for 4-H kids to come and show off projects that they have spent a whole year, sometimes more, working on. It, the 4-H is an organization that builds leaders. It helped build strong families, it teaches sportsmanship, leadership, public speaking, and gives children's chances to compete in local, county, state, and even national levels. Many would not be able to do it were it not for 4-H. For many, the county fair is a step for them to qualify to have those opportunities. For many, the county fair is the end of their journey, but they will continue on in life, becoming community leaders, government, nonprofit organization, and private business leaders. The partnership we work to build now will have benefits for our community for many years to come. As a member of this community, the loss of the fair would be detrimental to helping us grow, retain, community leaders. The fair is not just for 4-Hers. It's an opportunity to come together as a community. Anyone can enter the open class division, and there are many dedicated people in Salina who work hard every year to bring their projects. I would love to see that continue to grow as we bring in more of our community to the fair. While many might see the fair as just the carnival and/or food, it's truly an opportunity to show the entire community some of the best our county has to offer. It is my hope that the county, city commission is willing and able to work with the fair board to make the Tri Rivers Fair the best fair in the state.
Thank you. Phillip, is there any, is there any way that we could visit with the city and see if we can't? I know at the time that, you know, that after we lost the arena and stuff over there, and I mean, looking at those prices of $30,000, I mean, that's a, that's a big chunk to be out of and to lose. Is there any way that we can talk to the, the city, you know, sit down with the city of Salina, see if we can't negotiate some terms during that time of the fair? I would really hate to see, I mean, I made the comment that the fair's right now, I mean, it's almost not worth going over to. I mean, there's, it's nothing like it used to be when, you know, the fair used to, used to come to town. I don't know if there's something we can do to, you know, visit or talk to or see what we could do to negotiate some terms and, and help out and see if we can't get this thing turned around.
We could certainly have a conversation with the city. My understanding is that they have a management contract with private company that runs T-PAC, and I think the prices are sort of set for larger commercial-type shows. I mean, I, we could certainly have a conversation, but I'm not sure we'll get very far as far as T-PAC goes. We could certainly have a conversation about economic impact and, you know, whether anybody wanted to contribute some funding, but...
Okay.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if, if you're trying to involve the city here, I've sat in that chair for four years. The quickest way to get, if you want something done, is for you to get ahold of the mayor, and you and the mayor sit down and come up with a conclusion, not necessarily a plan economically, but a plan to have a meeting, joint meeting if you will, or a small meeting, involve others. But you have, we gotta, you know, we can't do it at the city commission meeting, we can't do it at this county mission. You guys have, somebody has to do it behind the scenes and then bring it to the county commission. That's where your leadership role is involved, I think.
Okay.
That's my thought.
That's doable, no problem.
Thank you. I mean, we're willing to do what we need to do, so. I want to go back up a little bit because, because I am aware of this too. Well, Philly elaborated too, because when I was doing with the Equafest, the city really doesn't have any control right now over, over T-PAC. That's, that's a total different management. They've kind of leased the building to them, and they set their fees, and there's nothing, it's, that's, that's a big pill that, you know, it's an itch we can't scratch. I talked to the city last night. The funny thing is, if you talk to some of the people at T-PAC, you hear different stories. So it's just, I just want us all to come together. It's an, it's an event that in, in two years will be selling, celebrating a milestone birthday. And at these rates, you know, the fair went bankrupt many, many, many years ago. And, and the Sunflower Lions pulled it out, and then the county got involved. And we don't want to see that happen again, but that's a big pill to swallow for a small event in, in a two-year downturn. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll move into our consent agenda, which consists of items, which is approval of tax rule adjustments, the approval accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of payroll, approval of county commission minutes for February 13th, 2024, the approval of an agenda to extend the time for Rural Water District Number One for ARPA projects, approval to amend, addend, of the agenda to extend the time for Rural Water District Eight for ARPA projects. Is there anything on this agenda that any commissioner would like to see removed? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Well, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we got an approval and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, passes 5-0.
I didn't hear a vote from over here.
He, he's the one who, uh...
Yeah, Monty.
Monty, uh...
Mine wasn't aye. Yes, I made the motion.
Yep. Sorry. Okay. Okay. This will now move us into the informational items.
Commissioner, Commissioner's comments.
I've just got one thing that I wanted to bring up and ask. April 16th, which is a Tuesday, which is our regular meeting, that is the time that KCC is going to be meeting. They're going to be meeting in Pittsburgh. And I would like to bring it to the commission and see if it's possible, since we've got a couple of commissioners going. We have an open date on the 30th of April that we don't have a meeting. Is it possible that we can move that April 16th meeting to the 30th? And that way there, we can attend that meeting.
My thought is, if we still have a quorum, why are we changing dates? If there's a quorum available, the two of you want to go to the meeting, then that's fine, but if we have a quorum, why are we, why are we changing?
Okay. That's fine. We'll move on.
That's just one guy. I'm just, nobody else got anything to say, why?
Well, I've, I've yet to commit to Pittsburgh. I've been making my plans. I might be attending that. We might lose that quorum at that.
Well, if you have three going, then that, obviously, that's, that's a different story.
But we're, we're talking April. That could happen. It doesn't have to be decided the day.
Okay. We'll table that until later on then.
Item two is announcements. So that comes back to me. So we have a new election this year. It's March 19th is the presidential preference primary. And early voting starts tomorrow for that, so we will be going February 28th to March 18th at noon. And then also, if you had requested advanced mail ballot, those will also be going out tomorrow as well. So we start voting eight to five tomorrow in our office.
Okay, any other announcements? That brings us to the concept discussion.
Discussion of repairs to old sheriff's office and jail facility.
Good morning, Commissioners. So, the good news is, we have a brand-new facility for the sheriff's office and the county jail and have invested a lot of money into improved conditions there. But as you all are aware, that means we have an old building that we're dealing with as well. And so, we knew that there were some things that were not optimal. That's part of why the facility moved. We're going through a study right now, and we just got proposals, actually on Friday evening was the, the proposal deadline. We've received four proposals for a joint study of facilities with the city and county. So that's, that's going according to plan. But on a temporary basis, we've moved Court Services, which was displaced off of the third floor as part of the courtroom renovations up there. They have temporarily moved into the old sheriff's offices. And then we've actually also had some interest in potentially someone using the old jail admin offices. We don't have any plans for the cell, the jail cells right at the moment, but the admin offices sort of at that corner of 12th and Elm, I think it would be. That, there's, like I said, potential use there, and then Court Services in the, in the old sheriff's offices. Those two things have surfaced some of the problems that we've experienced in that facility. So the first being the roof. So the Court Services moved in, and we had that large snow event. And as soon as the snow started to melt, they started putting out waste baskets because it was dripping through their ceiling in seven or eight different places around that facility. We did have somebody come out and do a review, take, take a look at the, the roof and see what that would entail. Preliminary, obviously, if we decide to go forward, we need to go out for bids, but the preliminary estimate on that is just north of $70,000 to do a very minor repair, not a full... I mean, it would be a new membrane because they can't really fix the old membrane, but it would be kind of the minimal thickness and minimal warranty and all, you know, as, as light touch as, as possible. There are also some issues in terms of the way the heating and air is controlled for the building because, again, for the last 30-plus years, it has been operated sort of all as one facility. So to kind of cut down on the operational cost of that, you could essentially turn off the boilers and, but then you'd have to do some mini-split units in occupied spaces. That's another $70,000 at the low end. Then there's interesting issue. So there's a fire alarm on the building, of course, and the sheriff recently handed me a bill and said, "Well, this is yours now." And so we were paying, when the, when the facility was occupied, it made sense, but we were paying $10,000 a year for fire alarm monitoring. Well, now that it's largely unoccupied, I've been in contact with the alarm company about reducing that price. One of the things that might make sense would be to actually relocate the alarm panel because it's currently in the old jail. It would make more sense for it to be in the office areas. Guess the price on that? Another $70,000. And then the entire facility, there, there are separate gas meters and separate water meters, but there's only one electric meter for the old jail and the old sheriff's office all combined. And I don't even want to tell you the price on that one because it is well north of $70,000. But so there are all these expenses for making that what I'm going to call livable for a short period of time. And then we're in the middle of the study about what do we do with it long-term, right? And so my question that I would like to pose to the commission is, how much would you like to sink into that building on a short-term basis? You know, if the answer is zero, then we need to move Court Services out and find a new home for them. If the answer is we're willing to go up to 100 or 200, then we could do some things. Not everything, but we could do some things. I'm guessing the answer is not repair everything because if the answer is repair everything, then you're sort of short-circuiting the study, right? Because then you're committed to keeping the building and in sort of its current configuration. So that's just what I'm asking as a question. Is, is there a comfort level? Obviously, you know, if you, if you say, "Here's where we would like to stay, go out, do bids, bring things back." But I just, I, I need to know that it's okay to spend some money before I go try and get bids for things. So that's, that's the story. Just as a reminder, just, you know, food for thought in your discussion. We did spend about just right at 2:50 on 229 North 9th, the island, on, you know, getting that into livable condition. So, you know, if, if we were willing to spend a similar amount, we could address a few of these things. And there is funding in the CIP available that, that we could, could use for this. Obviously, we just transferred some money back from the jail project, the money that was spent out of the CIP originally. We recaptured over $2 million. So it's not a, it's not a dire situation from a financial standpoint, but it is one of those things where you kind of hate to throw good money after bad if you're gonna do something different with that building in three or four years, so. Please give me feedback.
How many people do we have over there that's got Court Services?
13.
And I think you just answered my question with your last comment. Are you thinking short-term is three to four years?
So the study, we're hoping the study would be completed by the end of '24, which means it would be the '25. You know, during '25, when we prepare the budget, we would start doing whatever investments are recommended by that study, which really means the '26 budget that you're adopting in the middle of '25. So I've told everybody I don't see us swinging a hammer in any way, shape, or form until January of '26. That's at the earliest. That's assuming we like what the study recommends. That's assuming we can, you know, afford what the study recommends. So, so I think you're talking, you know, this is, this is '24, so even if everything came together, it's, it's two years from right now before you're starting construction. And so that means probably three or four years before you have something ready for occupancy.
Well, I, I got a couple of questions.
Well, I, I got a couple of questions and a couple of comments. If it's, we're three, two, three, four years away from any decision on that. We, we can't, I can't see allowing water to continue to get inside the building deteriorated if we, not knowing which way this is going to play out. My question is, the, the property on North Tenth, would it not accommodate court services?
Um, it might be able to physically accommodate them. It is not set up as well for the sort of thing that they need. The advantage of the sh- old sheriff's office is each of the officers has a designated space where they can do interviews with their probation clients and that sort of thing. And, um, in order to replicate that at two oh-three North Tenth, you're probably talking about some construction of walls at that facility and then
I haven't, I haven't turned it yet. I, I guess I need to go through North Tenth and
It's, it's got, um, it's just, I think there are three private offices currently and then a large conference room. And then there's a big open space in the front. And so y- it would have to be reconfigured to really work for court services.
Would, would North Tenth be more conducive for the people in the island to be in? And, uh, because there are a lot of separate offices at the island that court services could use. I, I'm just throwing this out. I, I, I'm just throwing things around here, but but to go back to your original, I, I can't see letting the, the roof sit and, and leak. If we decide to do that, then we're deciding right now that, uh, that we'll be demolishing that building or, so. That's just my thoughts.
I just wanted to comment, it says like, we knew, I mean, it's, it's been, I, I know a few years, I think that this roof has been leaking, but with the new jail being built, it's like we don't want to put money into it to fix it. But here it is, it's like, uh, this, we knew that this was going to be utilized for something, whether it was court services or something else. I just can't see, I think that's kind of like, we have to get that fixed immediately because we, we had to spend money over here at the island to fix that roof. And I think it's over here at that other on, on North Tenth, that we got to do something to the roof there in that building? Oh, that's nothing there? Okay, I thought there was another roof we was kind of looking at also, but, but that, that is the jail.
The health department still has roof issues, but not, not Tenth.
Okay, I'm sorry, but it's like, and here's the jail. I, I think the, the spend seventy to a hundred thousand dollars to get that roof fixed is kind of like, I, I think we have to get that done just to protect that area of that building, whether rest of it all goes away or, you know, that way if the city police later wants to take it over or down the road. But yeah, if it's going to be to the end of twenty-four before that study gets done, I, I think we need to invest in that right now, yeah. But that's, that's just me.
Back to your initial, uh, comment, Phil, and that is that, uh, how much, what's our comfort level of spending over there? Based on what we knew when we moved the sheriff out of there, uh, my comfort level is zero. We knew when, the reason we built a new jail, we overcrowding at our jail was, we thought, well, okay, we can add on. But the reason we didn't do that wasn't cost. It was because we were told the building was deteriorated, the infrastructure, the electrical, the plumbing and so forth was beyond repair. And now we're wanting to repair. If we're going to do that, uh, I'm going to say that that would be a permanent home for, for, uh, court services. If we're going to spend this money to fix it right now as a Band-Aid, that's going to be their home. Why are we going to fix it and then move them somewhere else? I, Jim's got the right idea, I think, and that is, uh, Tenth Street's sitting over there, uh, ready to go, just about. I mean, they, it wouldn't take a whole lot to get it, uh, to where it'd be big enough. I don't know what square footage we're talking about, how big that building is and thirteen people. Uh, I mean, how big, what kind of offices, uh, they require, I don't know. But, uh, I, if, if we're going to spend money on that over there now, and you're talking, what? I heard you say seventy thousand about three times. So a quarter of a million dollars or whatever, why are we going to spend that? And then move them eventually somewhere else? Either let's don't spend money over there, or if we do, that's where they're going to be.
Okay, I, I think that if you, um, you have maybe the prospect of having rental, renting out, uh, part of that area over there, but I can't see it generating enough funds to ever touch what you'd have to put into it to make it viable for them to use. As far as just taking care of the building, the structure itself, if we could stop the water leakage and protect the building, not even caring if, if it's occupied or unoccupied, you're just stopping any type of, um, damage, uh, down the road that would be more expensive to ever, depending on what the study says. So much of this is going to hinge on, on that study and everything that comes out of that. So I, I really don't know.
You said seventy thousand for the roof and then is the HVAC system, is that something that has to be addressed or?
No, I mean, if, um, the HVAC system, um, I mean, it's designed for a massive building, right? So you don't, you don't want to heat and cool spaces that have nobody in them. But so I think it would be i- in a, it, it would not be a great use of your monthly electric and gas bills, but i- it's not necessary to redo it.
Is the sheriff's office also tied into that boiler system?
On the electric side, it's all one. On the gas side, it's separate. And so I think there's a separate heating.
Well, don't turn the switch on, you don't, don't use any electricity, so. I mean, we can control that to an extent.
To an extent, yeah.
And it's getting to be that time of year where you don't have to worry about some of that freezing up. But the other, the other thing, question, and it's just pretty much a question is that, like I said, even to spend seventy to a hundred thousand dollars to fix the, the roof, which is the, the main part. But the, on the other building over here on Tenth Street, uh, that's a building that we're renting, right? And I think you had commented, we have a one-year lease on that. So w- would it be really to the best use of taxpayer money there to go in there and put new walls and redo that building to fit their needs on a building that we're renting? I'd hate to see that done also.
But there wasn't, there were some options on that building too? I mean, later on for purchase?
Yeah, I think if, I, I think, um, if you did want to invest in turning that into a long-term space, we would need to have a longer conversation with the current landlord about that, you know, converting into a more of a purchase, but.
Another quick question here is, is that I, I know that right now, since a clerk is here, is that we're, we're using that to, to store voting machines and stuff? And, and we're even looking at put, installing a surveillance, uh, security system? Why, is there any reason why the, the, the old sheriff's, the, the, the over there couldn't be used to store these products in? Because that's pretty secure over there.
I mean, it probably could be, Jamie and I haven't had that conversation. It, uh, the reason they are where they are was a timing issue because the sheriff's office hadn't moved yet when the construction of the elevators started and, you know, it's sort of a chicken and egg thing. But, yeah, I mean, we could certainly explore that. I think there, once the elevator gets fixed in this building, I think the plan is to bring them back here. Jamie recently got that funding from the Secretary of State to do additional security things in this building, so.
Okay, I just.
Well, I actually think Commissioner Vidicson hit it on the head when he said, you know, when we told the public we were going to build a new jail and we were going to spend eighty million dollars on a new jail, I can just see us going back now and telling the public, we're going to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do some temporary repairs on that space now. Uh, I feel the same way. I, I, I'm totally against it. I think that, you know, we can, if we wanted to spend whatever it took over the, over at the Tenth Street to put in over there, or like Roger said something about maybe, or, or using, maybe it was Jim, has said something about using the, the island, switching places, doing something like that. I just cannot see putting in quarter of a million dollars into that old jail after we told the public that we needed a new jail because this one here was falling apart.
The only, the only thing that has changed since the vote, however, is at that time, we did not know we were getting two new judges. And this is since then. And so what is happening is the court services had to be moved because of, of that situation. So I, I get what you're saying. We did tell them that, but at the same time, th- times, things have changed.
And can I add just one thing? So, um, one, if it's leaking in the roof, I don't want my election equipment over there. And two, um, because it needs to not have water in it. And then two, it also has to be temperature-controlled, the location that it's at. So if we're not making sure that that's temperature-controlled, that would be an issue for my equipment.
Okay, gotcha.
But yes, after the elevator is done, then we can bring it back. But right now with one elevator, we had to move it over there.
Well, Jamie, we, we wouldn't put your equipment into a building that was leaking.
Jamie, do you know how many square feet that you need for your storage area?
Well, what we have down in the, in B-ten and, and our cages is enough square footage for what we have. And I, to be honest, I can't tell you what that is.
So back to Phil's point on the elevators, once that is fixed, you can get the material, get it back over here. So we really don't need a long-term fix for election equipment at
Right.
either place.
Correct.
So, and, and when does, I mean, are we talking, what, thirty days, sixty days before that happens?
Well, according to the Building Authority report this morning, it should be by the first part of April.
Then that's a moot point that we're talking about there, you know. E- e- irregardless, I mean, if that's available, irregardless of what we decide, that building is going to be available quick, whether we use it or not.
Let me pose the question, taking, uh, court services out of the equation, do we want to fix that roof or not?
Are we talking over, the roof over the offices only?
Yeah, and it's not even the full, uh, office space. It would be sort of the, the lower part of the office space. If you have been over there, if you recall, there's a second-story area and that's excluded. It's really just that lower roof, um, area that would be the repair for that, um, you know, preliminary estimate.
So what's the rest of the roof look like right now then? I mean, overall?
Well, I mean, the jail is a much newer structure than the offices. And so the, the jail hasn't had the same, uh, I'm, I'm not going to say there are no leaks in it, but it hasn't experienced the same level of problems that the offices have. So I would not, you know, particularly if we don't have anybody going in there anytime soon, I wouldn't recommend that repair. But the office space, um, you know, to Commissioner Wies's point, regardless of whether court services is there or not, it's really a decision point about whether you sort of protect the investment in that building for the future or whether you sort of let water intrude in a building and do what water does and.
Let me go back and clarify my statement. I still want to spend zero over there. That doesn't mean that I won't spend money, it means I don't want to do it. I don't want to spend a dime over there. But if we're going to, if we're only talking the area over the offices, and that's something that we're probably going to have to do, and that means, in my opinion, that we're committing ourselves to that portion of that building long-term for something. We don't know what yet, but obviously we need all types of office space and clerical room. We need it. But as far as going over to the jail portion of it, the, the incarceration part of it, to renovate that, uh, is not, not in my plans. There, there's nothing, that's going to be useless. But I can see long-term use, even if we rent it out, uh, if we're going to protect the offices for the office area. Again, I don't want to spend the money, but we're going to have to do that to protect the investment portion of it. I, 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 I think we need to go over there and look and physically see, you know, I've got it in my mind what's over there, but we need to physically see what area we're protecting, how much of it we're going to protect and where our, our a- ability to spend money is going to stop. Where, where, what portion of that building, where do we stop spending money?
I agree. I think I'd at least like to go ahead and, and I would like to see, um, uh, the roof redone. The only precedent that I could think of is years and years ago is when the city put on the roof, uh, to the old theater downtown, not knowing what was going to happen. But they just knew that whoever went in there, um, it, it had to stop leaking or we would have had to tear that down. So the unknown is, is hard and spending money on the unknown is hard because it might not even be a, a county property. But I just think that, getting back to Jim's point, you're pretty much, you're pretty much saying to not put the roof on that it, it's going to get demolished.
So I think what I'm hearing, to recap, is we will do a, uh, we'll go out to bid for a roof on only that office portion and make it as, uh, light touch as possible. Uh, and we will not do any other investments at this time, pending the outcome of the study.
The outcome of the study troubles me a little bit because I, we have a much bigger problem, in my opinion, and that's the health department, that building that they're in. And if we're talking twenty twenty-six before we even begin to think about something, that really troubles me. That, that, I, I don't know. I, I think a study isn't going to do me any, we know we need a new building. Why are we not take, putting that aside and getting that going? Because it's not going to be part of any other building or whatever. We need to get that facility moved, or I mean, that, that department moved. We either need to start construction on a new building, we need to find a building to purchase or one to rent. We need to get them out of that building. It should have never been, come to this point, uh, eight or ten years ago when the previous commission, uh, thought they could fix that building. We need to get out of there. We need to get our foot on the gas and get that thing moving. We've been talking about it for a couple of years now, we haven't done anything. Doesn't sound like any of that has any support.
No.
Well, I.
Point taken, we, we kinda had our hands full here the last few years. But it has been on our radar, and, and it is frustrating that it's still so far even to be looked at. If it's part of the overall picture of what this study is about, maybe we could be more proactive, knowing that that is, we know, long-term, that is not the answer over there. That's, that's a given. So maybe we could be more proactive outside of this study. It'd be nice to have it included in the study, be inclusive.
Well, the way I see it, the, the study probably involves office spaces, the building, the building, this building itself, and how much room that the city and the county need for more clerical spaces. I, I just don't understand or see how the Health Department is, is, is part of that vision. That, that's a, that's a set aside vision to me.
So I will say, we have not done nothing. We have started bankrolling money. So in this year's budget, you all approved a dedicated transfer to the Health CIP with part of a vision being a new building. The reason it's included as part of the study is because the commission has never told me where you would like the Health Department to go. So if, you know, one, multiple possibilities have been discussed, right? We, we could knock down the building they're in and rebuild on that site. We could knock down the jail and build there. We could, you know, there's even been discussion of if the courts were to move over to Memorial Hall, the Health Department could be on the third floor of this building, right? I mean, so that's why it's part of the study, is to figure out where it goes, not because we're trying to delay it. We have been accumulating money to make that be, and I have heard from the commission multiple times that that is priority number one. That is the first project you wanna tackle based on whatever we get. So I'm, I'm mindful of that, but this, you know, I, I will move it faster. If you, if you want me to move it faster, tell me where.
That is exactly the part, I'm, I'm not blaming you, and I'm not saying you haven't done anything. You mentioned it, the, the commission hasn't given you the direction, and that's the part I'm talking about.
Well, I think I got what I need for today, so.
Something to think about, yep. We've been thinking about it for a couple of years.
Well, from what I got out of this meeting, and out of this discussion so far, I think we're, we're looking for something for you to bring back on that partial roof on the, over there. I do like the idea of maybe taking a, a walk over there and taking a look at what we're talking about, so we get a clear view of what exactly we, we mean. But, but I think that's where, that's where we're leaning at right now.
Absolutely, anytime you want to, I'd be glad to give you a tour. Could it be a study session for you, just go over there for that, or individually anytime?
I know we had the opportunity to get into 10th Street earlier, and I didn't take advantage of it, but I, for, to take a road trip, I just soon add 10th Street onto that.
So is there interest in that being part of the commission meeting? Or would you like to just individually make appointments and?
Personally, I'd rather it be part of the commission meeting, so that we can discuss it amongst ourselves. We can, we can banter back and forth. It's all within walking distance.
Okay, so we could do that. I'm gonna suggest probably week after next. I think we've got a few different things next week, but the 11th, I think it's the 11th or 12th, whatever that. 12th. 12th. We'll, we'll translate that for that meeting, if that works.
Is, is that spring break? I won't be available.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, well, we'll see if we can fit it on next week then, cause the 19th is study session out at Roden Bridge, so.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Then that will move us into item G.
Executive session.
Mr. Chair, staff would request that the commission recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act to discuss Department Head Performance Evaluation. Executive session to last for five minutes, and reconvene in this room at 9:56.
Have a motion? Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, move into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, that passes. For next week. Oh, do we have, we need to, okay.
Just to note that no action was taken in executive session.
No action was taken. Okay. So anything else for the cause? I have a motion for adjournment.
It's a moot. Second.
The motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, that passes 5-0. See you next week.